The regular meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board. It is seven thirty PM on November sixth. Planning Board meetings, excuse me, are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person, virtually through Zoom, or excuse me, through Google Meet pursuant to section twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely. So that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. Please note the meeting's being recorded. So, do we have anybody here or online for public comment that is not for something that is already listed on the agenda? All right, so here and done, we're gonna move forward into acceptance of the previous minutes. So, the minutes from the previous meeting were distributed to the board ahead of time through the Google Drive and have also been made available to them in writing. So, I would like to, per the order of this, I would like to get a motion and a second and then run through for any line edits. And just agree to do a friendly amendment if we need to, so would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Here the first and the second discussion.
Section five, A, under A and R, Country Hand, three Williams Road, second bullet. Last sentence, I was confused, Chairman Row accepts the withdrawal with, without prejudice? One or either?
Um, yeah, it would be without prejudice.
That's what I thought.
That, that should be corrected to without.
Okay, so we move with. And, uh, did, who, who prepared these?
Larry.
Okay. So would you be correcting this here?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, it's, uh, number five, under the business, A, A and R, and then the second bullet under Country Hand. I've taken the liberty that, since this is a doc X document, there are a few minor problems, mostly with tenses and or plural versus singular. I've already made those corrections, but this one, I just wanted to confirm with the chair. Um, if you can just make this one change, then I think the rest of it is fine by my review.
Okay, any, uh, anything else for?
Nope, online.
All right, so would, uh, both of you agree to a friendly amendment to include the edits we discussed and base it on the online version? Awesome, so, uh, with that, I'll call a vote.
Shaggy, aye.
Dak, aye.
And the chair is aye, the minutes are acceptance, are accepted. So, moving down the list, we have a public hearing for a scenic road application. And, uh, my apologies, um, that, that it had been listed in the agenda at six thirty, even though the meeting wasn't posted until the seven thirty. In the interest of complying with the open meeting laws, we decided to just run with the meeting for seven thirty because there would have been an issue if we started the meeting early after advertising. Whereas you can call late as long as, um, as long as you let people know you're gonna be calling late. So it was the most fair way we had to do it in a situation that was gonna be challenging. So, apologies on behalf of the board for anybody that inconvenienced. But, uh, but with that, I'm calling to order the, uh, the public hearing for a scenic road application pursuant to the provision of MGL Chapter forty, section fifteen, scenic roads. The Hubbardston Planning Board is holding a public hearing on Wednesday, November sixth at six thirty PM, uh, being called in fact at seven thirty four PM. Regarding the removal of, um, of public shade trees located along Williamsville Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts, oh, one, four, five, two, for the applicant, National Grid, for new utility pole installations. So, uh, with that, we have an order that we usually run, uh, our public hearings through by, um, actually by administrative rule. So, I'm gonna consult with that now. Uh, so first on the list, and this is actually gonna steer our conversation a little bit, um, which is a staff report regarding any procedural or application deficiencies. So, we did have, uh, the, the planner Alec Wade run through this, and he did issue, uh, some initial thoughts, uh, that he provided in a memorandum to the planning board, which we can also share with you. But essentially, the, uh, the short of it is, is we need to have a plan for this and we have to have a plan publicly available for seven days in order to grant the application. So, um, if you have a, uh, and this is a question for the applicant, do you have a plan you're gonna present to us tonight?
I have a, uh, work plan of about seventy trees that we would like to remove, yes.
Okay, do you have, uh, an actual, um, do you have a map with the plan?
I do not have a map, drawn up, with the trees represented on it, no.
Okay. Okay, so ideally, um, and I'll refer you to our, our new planner on that, and our planner is new. He's, uh, he's only really been established in his job for about a month. Um, but he's certainly helping us tighten up our process. But, uh, but yeah, we do need to be able to, um, to post that for seven days according to our bylaw. So, uh, we'll put it on the website and we'll hang it in the town clerk's office in order to comply with that, and that's a statute, statutory requirement for us to allow, so.
Sure.
Um, if you have any questions about that, Alec will happily catch up with you and I'll also provide you a copy of the report that he created about that deficiency.
Appreciate that.
So we have received some written materials on this, specifically, we have received a cover sheet for the application and. We find it, binder. Where was it?
It was in the back of the jet page. Do you need a sheet?
Uh, no, I'll just go to the online version. So we did receive some documents related to this ahead of time, and this is all procedural stuff that I'm noting for the, the purpose of the record before we really get into the meat of it. And. And what we did receive was, um, a cover sheet and a list of trees, uh, in a, in an Excel sheet and a, uh, a copy of the scenic road public hearing notice that went out. Uh, and that constitutes the file on this at the moment, and as I mentioned before, the plan is missing and we do need that.
And just to be clear, the plan would be the map specifically?
Yes.
Okay.
Would be the maps plus the timeline, Chair, or proposed timeline?
Uh, the safest response to that question would be yes, but I don't know, I don't know specifically how plan is defined in that. Plan for most of the stuff we do is the written drawing. Um, and not necessarily procedural plan, but I would include both, um, just for, for clarity purpose. So, uh, with, with that, um, we, we have kind of a procedural question to make as a board and also we'll take the applicant's feedback on this. So we are gonna have to continue the actual decision in the public hearing until the next meeting. But with that said, um, we have some folks that have some questions, and are you folks also here tonight for this matter?
Yep.
Okay, so with that, I would encourage the applicant to take the opportunity to present some evidence and answer some questions tonight, and we can revisit this at the continued hearing. I mean, it also gives you an opportunity to amend anything you need to. So if that makes sense to the board, makes sense to the applicant, let's go about it that way. So that brings us to next on our process flow here, which is invite the applicant or his or her representatives to address the board and present what they're looking for. So please come on up, introduce yourself, what you're looking for.
Uh, I won't be able to turn to you since you guys are here to ask questions, so I'm gonna take this one.
So, uh, good evening, thanks for having me here, I'm Derek La Range, I work with National Grid's forestry department, I'm here to represent them tonight. I did not plan this work specifically, so I didn't go out and tag these trees and look at them all individually myself, but I did go over them with the person who did, uh, over the past couple of days. He's not able to be here tonight because it's his anniversary, so I think we'll forgive him for not being here. You're nodding like you know that, what a smart play. As I mentioned earlier, I have a list here, which you also have, uh, sixty-nine trees, which were found to be on, uh, the public right of way. Along Williamsville Road between sixty-eight and Burnshirt. This, uh, who would like a copy of this while I've got it?
Is that the spreadsheet?
This is the spreadsheet.
I don't, thank you.
All set, all set. Great. Pull up my copy. So this project is, uh, upgrading certain poles, not every pole along the road needs to be upgraded, to increase the height, uh, to allow Comcast to attach to the pole. Uh, we need to create space for them because not every pole is a sufficient height, and we don't want the, their lines to become energized, so we just need to put our lines up a little higher. So that when their lines are attached, there's not any risk, uh, of the lines becoming energized. The tree replacements that come are then, because the wires are then changing position in those locations, and also the poles themselves, uh, are being straightened in some cases where they've been leaning over. So where the trajectory of the line might change, we also have to consider trees for removal. We are also trying to get a, uh, a certain specification to, achieved, so our specifications are twenty feet above, six feet to either side, and ten feet below. And this is to reduce, again, the risk of, uh, trees becoming energized by being too close to the wires and coming into contact, uh, accidentally. Or the incident of failure when limbs or whole trees fail and even just the course of normal events, but particularly during storms. So, that is why we're, we're attempting to achieve this specification, and because this road has not previously really been achieving that, we are, there may be some healthy trees that are too close. Uh, in fact, you know, a lot of these trees that were specified are within just a foot or two of the wires, and that's why we'd really like to, uh, see them removed, even if they are healthy. That being said, uh, there are sixty-nine trees, thirteen of them are dead or dying, uh, thirty-five have significant clearance issues, meaning that they are either already hazards due to proximity or would be at risk of dying due to the extent of necessary pruning. Uh, of those, fourteen of them are actually less than fifteen inches in diameter, so they are not particularly large trees. And then sixteen of the trees have addition, conditions that are, have been deemed hazardous. Uh, that's just a summary for you, that's not, you, you know, if you look, read through the list, you could kind of draw those conclusions, um, as well. So having said that, are there questions about any of the particular trees? Has anybody been out to look at any of the trees that were tagged?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
I have not.
So I w- I do wanna make note that there was a previous hearing, there have been previous projects along this road, as I'm sure you know. Um, one that was already approved and has been wor- been worked on, um, that was at, from the beginning of sixty-eight. And it goes down to like the Williamsville Road extension. At that point, the circuit actually changes, and there's been another project for hazard tree removals that's been, being undertaken, that has been getting tagged up until just recently. So there may be some confusion as to the color of the tags that are on the road. Our team was using blue and then yellow tags, we found that the blue was actually confusing because it overlapped with some of the other team's flagging colors, so then we changed it to yellow. The other ti- team uses red flagging for removals and blue flagging for trimming, so that's where that, that confusion came from. So if residents are approaching and saying, what is the color flagging mean, why does it look like my trees have been painted with a rainbow? That is why, because there's multiple projects happening and we actually had to make a change in, in the middle of it. Sorry, that was a word salad?
That's okay.
I will give you guys the floor to ask any questions.
All right, so, um. Yes, yeah, let's go with any questions from board?
Colored red tag.
Red.
Okay, red, so that was, that's likely rela- it, more than likely related to a di- a separate project, but I'd be happy to check the list, um, if you let me know. Hmm, this doesn't re- necessarily have addresses on it, it should.
Yeah, it just has pole numbers.
All right, well, let's, let's come back to that and run with, um, uh, run with the, the checklist, so let's, let's go to, to board questions and the staff questions, and then we'll go to general public comment and any questions and testimony.
Yeah, I may.
Absolutely.
Several questions, uh, so this project would be fairly similar to what we saw on Brigham Street and Westminster Road in terms of the new poles going up and, and being, replacing the old ones, there's something very similar to what you've done there in terms of the pole replacement, correct?
Yes, very similar, so same location for the pole sets, um, just going up between five and ten feet depending on the need.
Uh, understood, three-phase electricity?
Yes, it's currently three-phase electricity, uh, will remain three-phase electricity.
Will remain as three-phase electricity, okay.
Yes.
You mentioned that these are all on the right of way, I do however note that on the, uh, ownership column.
Hmm.
You do indicate several as being private with a question mark.
Sure.
And others that are just simply question marks. So like for example, row twenty-five through twenty-eight, I believe, so there's four of them right there.
Mm-hmm.
Prior to this here, on row eleven, it says private, but then there's a question mark, so it's like, is it? You don't know if it's private or it's private and it goes into somebody else's la- uh, uh, into a questionable property, uh, boundary?
So, I'll have to defer to checking back on that, those ones, especially where they were relatively small. I think that for the Williamsville Road cutoff one, I did look at that one specifically because it's thirty-six inches, it is in front of the, um, it's in front of the stone wall, so I would assume that it is pri- or it is within the public right of way.
But it does say there that if it is private, I have permission.
Right.
I being you?
No, not me, unfortunately, Josh.
Mary, um, I've had several residents reach out that National Grid did approach them, um, if the, if the tree was on the other side of the rock wall in their property, that the National Grid went door to door to reach out to them to get, seek permission to have the trees cut down.
Do we have that recorded, or is that just verbatim?
I can get, um, verbatim, she sat in my office this e- this evening.
Okay. And I, I, I think, I mean, it's great that we have agreements on, on, on that, um, but I do want to make sure that those that are question mark, we do understand, because the ownership, I think, is gonna be very important, and if we don't have something that is similar regarding to whether or not, if it is private, um, and permissions have yet to be sought, sought, um, I think we, we owe it at least to understand who the owners are of this, of the tree. Uh, there are several that say DCR, because it's, I'm assuming these must be on watershed itself, right? Has there been a conversation with DCR on these here?
I'm gonna defer to Eric on that, because Josh seemed a little uncertain about, you know, keeping them on the list or not.
Yeah, and, and again, so Eric, I'm more of some, the town tree warden, but I have to recuse myself as tree warden for purposes of this hearing. So, in this case, I'm, you know, helping with National Grid, but, um, Josh, uh, I believe that he's reached out to the DCR multiple times, he hasn't really gotten a response from the forester. I know on the, uh, Brigham Street, New Westminster job, the DCR, um, claimed ownership of a lot, a ton of those trees, and they basically said, take whatever, so.
Could we get something that, again, either is in writing or some form of confirmation?
Yeah, yeah.
Making sure that we, as an entity here, have crossed our Ts, dotted our Is, and understand that DCR has given their approval, I think it's important, and it's certainly contingent on us making sure that the due diligence has been, uh, executed on that.
Yeah.
So again, just to summarize, private, question marks, question marks by themselves, DCR, um, you are the tree warden.
I agree.
There are several trees here that have been marked as dying, dead, base rot, I'm assuming those are trees that you have reviewed on behalf of National Grid?
Just, just as a point of order, I, I don't believe the applicant can comment on this in that capacity.
Yes, sir. Okay, has somebody other than yourself?
There you go.
Had the, uh, had, had the, had the ab- ability to provide an opinion on the status of the comments that have been established here in this document?
Yep, Derek is a certified arborist.
Yeah, so I didn't plan this one, but I did review it.
But you said you yourself, you have gone to see these trees, so therefore I'm kind of wondering.
Well, I did review anything that was over fifteen inches, so there are some, you know, that are smaller that maybe consider, have been called dead, which I did not review. And if you'd like me to review all of them, I certainly could.
So you're saying that anything that is more than fifteen inches, like for example, I just take as an example, row five and row six, just to pick two right off the bat, they say dying, those two ash trees, one is eighteen inches, the other one is seventeen inches. Did you have reviewed those?
I have.
And you can attest to that?
I would say that they are in stages of decline or dying, it's hard to tell with the leaf off condition, but because of the pest Emerald Ash Borer, uh, which is present throughout the state and throughout the country, ashes are dying off en masse. And so when we see woodpecker activity, flaking bark, exit holes, we presume the tree to be dead. Now again, when I reviewed them, uh, leaf off condition, it's not always easy to tell if there may be some remnant of life in the tree, however, unfortunately, with all of the ashes, we consider them to be trees that are going to be dead very soon if they're not already.
But there are other types of trees, I mean, you'll no- note, I mean, you have pines here, you have oaks, and you have others, and so I, 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 the next question, this is really from my own clarification.
Sure.
What's the reason for a fifteen-inch cutoff, for your criteria to review versus not review?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, honestly, that was just because I, I had a limited amount of time to actually go out and check, and so being scenic roads, I think that people probably have a greater interest in the larger trees rather than the smaller ones.
Okay, and we'll see that by noting, uh, the people who are here, so, but I, I understand you've, and you've answered it, thank you.
Sure.
I think that's, that's it from my end right now.
Additional questions from the board or staff? Uh, questions from other public officials not directly serving the board? All right, so that moves us on to public comments and questions from the audience, so we'll go a little informally since we don't have a ton of people here on this. Uh, and, um, John, what do you got? Uh, please identify yourself for the record when you go to speak.
I'm simple.
Actually, my name's Gilbert Goffing, I live in forty-six Williamsville Road, and I was basically here just to see the timeline, from what I understand, having a red mark is a different crew than.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately it is, and if I might, I, I'll try to look it up, I, I'm not sure how, if my signal will allow me to find forty-six very quickly.
Don't worry about it.
But, you know, in theory, if, uh, yeah.
Do, how recently did the mark appear?
April.
April, not too recently, okay. Um, I'm a little surprised, and there's, is, they're not any sort of like a public notice, or like a white page on it?
I actually talked to the gentleman, and it, because he asked for permission.
Mm-hmm.
To remove the tree.
Was it Robert, Robert Attic, that chance?
I've got his name written down at home and I, it is not, but, uh.
Yeah, 'cause I thought that probably did already.
And I signed a, a permission slip or whatever.
Yeah, that sounds like our, our hazard tree mitigation group, um, 'cause they did mark the circuit and we've been.
Yeah. And as I said, if I remember right, it was in April.
Right, right, 'cause we had the, we had the hearing in May.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we can certainly look at, if you're interested in getting it down sooner than later, you know.
I'd love to get rid of it.
We can certainly look at that.
You said it was forty-six Williamsville?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, additional public comments and questions?
Yeah, Paul Sweeney, forty Williamsville Road. I believe I have four trees, 'cause they've been marked several times, tags taken off.
Okay.
And I believe you're saying they're yellow, so I thought they were green, but.
Sure.
They're both sets of shade, I guess, so.
Yeah, highlighter, highlighter color.
So that's an indication that you wanna take those down.
Yes, that would be.
I'd really like to go over somebody with someone to look at it, 'cause I was looking at them today. I've looked at them several times when I go to my mailbox, but today I was just looking at them, and going, well, can't they be cut back further?
Trim them back a bit more rather than.
Rather than cut them down, 'cause they, to me, they appear, they're healthy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and. Not sure if, if the shade, uh, or the scenic route, I wanna say it's been in, been around for a long time, and somebody didn't realize it and stuff. And I didn't realize it when I bought the house, uh, when I built the house and stuff, so in that essence, if they can be trimmed back further.
Sure.
They can be more appealing than having to look at four stumps, 'cause they're right in my driveway on both sides.
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
We'd be happy to review it.
So you, you're the tree warden in town now, but you're good at conflict because you represent National Grid too?
Right. Right, I work for National Grid.
You work for National Grid, so is it something that you could look at?
Absolutely.
And we could come to a decision, I mean.
Of course, yeah, I'd be happy to talk to you, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, one of my problems is, okay, it's a scenic road, now we're gonna have four stumps sitting there. Because they're in be, they're in a, a group, the one on one side, it's two on one side, I believe, and they're in a group.
Like a cluster of trees, yeah.
Yes, so you're not taking them all, 'cause they're not all marked.
Sure, they want the one that's like out front.
So it would be one that's coming further over.
Sure.
So, um, I remember when I was a kid, that, that'd be cutting trees and they'd cut branches off, and then they'd, I don't know, maybe it was a homeowner's deal, we used to put tar on the, where the branches were cut off so they wouldn't bleed out, like.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was a arborist, common arborist practice through the, like, the seventies, and then it was deemed to have no, no benefit to the tree.
It's, it's.
They don't, they don't, doesn't matter to them? Oh, okay.
As far as wound, 'cause it, it was, it was thought that that helped with the wound, uh, healing and enclosure, but the, the way a tree heals the wound is it, it compartmentalizes, so i- if you make a good, um,
It doesn't matter.
you know, a three-cut method where you undercut it, you know, cut the limb and then make a final cut, leaving the, um, the branch collar intact, then the, over time, if the tree's healthy, it'll, it'll compartmentalize and actually close over the wound.
Okay.
So it's, um.
So if that's something that we can do.
Absolutely.
And look at it rather than cut the whole tree down, and I could be off, I, I, what did you say, si- within six feet of the wires or such?
Yeah, within six feet is what we aim for, um, you know.
But, yeah, I mean, exceptions can be made, so.
We've got, let's see about, if I can find forty on the map here. It's a shame that there's only poll numbers.
Most people don't know the poll numbers in front of their house.
Thirty.
Thirty.
Well, that gives me something to work out, yeah, that's pretty.
Yeah, that's, that's a good frame of reference.
'Cause if you're at, if you're at forty-six and you're at forty, then you've gotta be relatively close. Oh, yeah. Hush in between us. So I wonder if it's.
Thirty-five, maybe thirty-five.
Is it a, a few, a few different oaks out front? Yes. Okay. Yeah, and from what I could tell, those were.
Those are worth review.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, they trimmed them all back so they could put the pole in, 'cause they told me at one point when they, the guy stopped before they put the pole up, that they couldn't put the pole up, 'cause they wouldn't have been able to get up there because they were in the way. Next thing I knew, they came by with a truck and they were, and they cut everything back.
They sheared it all up.
And sheared it off, and the branches that they, they were coming down weren't any bigger than, I think the biggest one I saw come down was two inch, that was coming out toward the road, or over the wires.
Um.
And after that, I thought, well, that looks pretty good, why are they, they're tagged again? I mean, at one point, the, the whole cluster was tagged to take down. And then, I wanna say they had blue on them.
Right, and then, uh, we were told we should change it from blue to.
Because of the other.
Yeah, a, a, a program.
No, but if we could look, we'll need it, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's a.
I think we'd keep the aesthetics of the, the scenic byway, uh, highway.
Yep.
So just a note for the record, we have an agreement between the, uh, the applicant and, um, excuse me, the, the property owner to review those trees specifically from the property. All right, so.
One more public comment.
I believe we have a written comment and, uh, I believe we have a written comment, and, uh, through the chair, could you read that into the record?
Yes, of course, uh, Dave Schumer of one forty-four Williamsville Road. Um, they, uh, questioned how far you're gonna take the trees down, um, to the roadway, obviously don't want to leave staring at stumps. Um, these, these trees are pretty close to the road, so they asked if, uh, the DBW director had been, cause if we're leaving stumps, it's, they're gonna hit them with the plow, cause they're no longer swerving not to hit a tree. The pl- the stump is now underneath the snow, they're not gonna see it. Um, and also, they wanted to know if they can have the wood. It's a common question that I get asked, so, uh, they would like to know when the trees fell, do they have the option of taking the wood?
Uh, I usually would defer to the town, because if it's a town tree, I don't wanna give away town wood to a private resident. Um, but if they're gonna, if they're gonna move it, if they're gonna process the wood themselves, then, uh, you know.
It's, it's ki- it's a public resource, but being how it's in front of, and generally the way I look at it, if it's in front of someone's house, and they want the tree, then they can take, they can take the wood.
Can I?
I mean, come on, I.
Yep.
I don't know if that's a bad, wrong interpretation or not.
Co- call age, you actually indicate the wood or not.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, most of them are blank, a, a few say very clearly no, but I do note there is one at least that I see that says a yes.
There's, there's. Yeah, yeah, um.
And it's the one that has a question as to what, it says, is, if it is private, I have permission.
Got it.
On those again.
Mm-hmm. So, in that case, this fellow is saying that, you know, if it's my tree, I, I would like the wood.
Mm-hmm.
Effectively. Um, and we would allow for that, you know, with, with private trees, certainly we.
And there's another one, which is definitely town, and that's one, row seventy-two.
So, I, I'm not sure what the rationale was there, they must have spoken with the homeowner who indicated that they'd like it, uh.
Right, so are we giving them the option?
And if, and if that's.
I mean, it seems like we're opening up the door for somebody to be able to say, yes, I'd like to have the wood. I'm also hearing that it's a public resource and therefore, I, and I hear what you're saying, and I think it makes perfect sense why start logging this around and figuring things. Otherwise, it's probably gonna get, uh.
Hauled away.
Yeah, it's gonna get hauled away, okay, gotcha.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, past precedents is that we have offered the wood to the person that it is cut down in front of their home.
Yes, thanks.
Should that person not want it, the wood gets cut, is brought away, it is not then offered to the community as free public wood.
Resource. Okay, good.
Right, cause it, I know other towns have done that, and it just becomes kind of a nightmare if you need a place to stay.
We don't have the resources for that.
And then it's, you know, it, yeah, it has to be processed, it's, unfortunately, it's, it's more of a waste product
Hmm?
for us than it is, you know, I, although it is a, a resource, but it's.
Okay.
The liability issues.
I have one more follow-up question for National Grid. Uh, I know that especially after two thousand and eight, uh, the winter storm that we had here, um, there was an active, there was an active program to, uh, by, by, I believe it must have been National Grid, but it could have been some other entity, uh, to do review and trimming of trees across multiple different roads here. My question regarding Williamsville Road specifically, is the intention not only for the poles, or is this also intended so that you don't have to come back over the next ten years and do any kind of, uh, review on that particular road?
Yeah, I mean, where, where we're doing the pole upgrades, that's where the work is, you know, intended, so it won't necessarily cover the whole road through this work. But yeah, I mean, we're, if we can achieve that, it would help us to reduce the degree of maintenance that would be necessary, and hopefully reduce the number of hazards on the road.
Which is great, because this town is prone to having problems with regards to power outages.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking though is, is that the review component that National Grid has, I would like to ensure that, and, and again, it's not a criteria for accepting or not accepting, this is more a pop, a comment, but I think is, is, is appropriate from a planning board perspective to present to you. That is, is that the review process, not necessarily the maintenance process, but the review process on these roads, continue at the periodicity that you think is required, uh, either by law or by regular maintenance programs that are considered to be best practices in the industry.
Of course, yeah, and that, that, that wouldn't change as a result of us coming through and doing some removals. We would still come in and do the maintenance on the, it's generally every five years that they come through to do the, the review and maintenance.
Okay.
Because, you know, stuff is going to grow in, even if we get the clearance that we want, stuff will start coming up from the ground and.
Okay.
And al- also in the case of this, um, stretch of roadway, it's, as Derek mentioned, it's, it's, there's a feeder tie, so it's, it's two different feeders. Fed in one way from Barry, basically up to where the, uh, solar field is more or less at the top of the hill. And the other way, we're fed in from Gardner. Um, so each, you have two different circuits, so you have two different maintenance intervals. Um, and then we have had, you know, our, our hazard tree program, uh, went through, that was in the spring, and now the other, basically the other circuit is, is, is getting also reviewed by the, the same, same program, hazard tree program. So you'll look, likely see another application from National Grid at some point, um, for the same stretch, random, not exactly the same stretch, but.
Like one half of the road and the other.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, thank you.
All right, so.
Yep, I have two questions, one really does retain too much, the tree removal. You mentioned Comcast, we have Spectrum, is Comcast coming through? Is that another discussion, some place down the line?
My understanding of the project is it's to bring Comcast, uh, through the town, I don't know if it will serve the town, and perhaps Eric knows.
I can't speak to that, I, you I would think that they would wanna serve the town, but I, I don't know whether, I can't.
Well, I didn't know if they would get a contract coming up or something.
I don't, I can't speak to Comcast.
There's a new contract coming up with Spectrum next year, but the specifics of that contract have not even begun to be negotiated. Until such time as the town is not in an exclusive contract with Spectrum, there is to be expected that Comcast would not be eligible to come in that proper wired form.
Okay, uh, so, and then the second is, um, how's it determined, or the footage, I should say, where's it determined from where your property line starts near the roadway?
Oh, that's.
I mean, do you have a dimension on that, or does the town tell you where, what that dimension is?
It has to be, yeah, it's by the town, we have to basically review it with the tree warden or the highway department, who lets us know, you know, where those lines are. Oftentimes, you know, it's considered to be the, the stone wall until we're told otherwise, um.
But do they have a dimension, like the center of the road in?
It varies. It, it varies a lot, depends on how was, how the road is even built.
It varies.
Sometimes the right of way, the road's not exactly centered on the right of way, so.
Might have shifted over time, yeah, it's.
So there's some variances.
If you go back and look, it's actually measured in some sort of old timey metric to like a pole.
Rods.
Yeah, chains, rods, yeah, rods, yeah.
Yeah, rods, yeah.
Four rods, steel.
Okay, no.
I was just wondering, you know, could use my, cause I think I signed a paper before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on them. But then they came and trimmed them all off, and I thought, maybe, well, maybe that's all done with, but then I got the letter, so it's not done with.
All right, well, thank you.
Good.
So, uh, assuming that you would like the opportunity to, um, to carry on the deficiency of the plan, it'd be appropriate for us to vote to, um, to continue this hearing to our next meeting on the twenty-first.
I, I think you just had one more thing on your public comment regarding the height of the stumps.
Uh, yeah, the height of the stumps, are you going straight down to, are you going straight down to the road line, or are you leaving it higher up?
So generally speaking, we get them as low as possible, uh, try to get them to about ten inches, uh, roughly where the root flare is. Uh, the only times that we aren't able to get them quite that low is if there's metal fencing or something like that, that has grown into the stump, which would prevent us from doing so. But I, it's a note well taken that, you know, there, some of the trees are right on the edge of the road and could become public hazards to the plows and, and should probably be dealt with accordingly.
The only reason she brought this up is one of the trees that they are slaying and have marked to take down apparently got hit by a plow last year, so.
Hopefully didn't contribute to the tree's health.
Yeah, so she just wanted to make sure if they were brought down, it wasn't causing an, yet another hazard in front of the house.
Yeah, can, uh, I guess the question is, do, will you reach out to Travis on that, or do we send the applicant to Travis?
I can liaise between the two.
Okay. I'd appreciate you liaising.
That is, liaising, okay, I will liaise.
All right, so, uh, in order to keep us, uh, close to on schedule, because we start late, um, anything else that can't wait for the continuing here? All right, so would somebody like to make a motion to continue this public hearing until our next meeting on the twenty-first at six thirty, six thirty for real?
So, vote.
Hearing of first, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Hearing of first and a second, uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, plenty of, uh, personal procedure.
Yep.
What are we expecting from the representatives of National Grid and or the tree warden for the next meeting? Is that one of the, one of their plans that we had discussed?
Yep, we're, we're expecting them to present a, uh, a written plan, plan being a map, uh, in enough time to us, so that we have seven days to display it before the meeting in order to comply with the bylaw.
Did we also create the timeline? Plan timeline, did we just, did we say yes or no?
That's not strictly required, but it's certainly a practice to, yeah, but yeah, we suggest that as a best practice.
Yep.
To write up the timeline with it, but it's not strictly required by the bylaw.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you for clarification on that, but yeah, so. So, uh, any, any further discussion? All right, calling and vote on the motion to continue?
You start, Eric.
Dak, aye.
And the chair is aye, we are gonna continue that. Um, and just as procedural note, we have forty days, forty-five days from when we open the public hearing on it in order to decide if it's a default, that's why we don't have to do any kind of agreement or anything. So, all right, so we'll see you in two weeks on that, and really you'll see the office, hopefully within the next seven days.
Do you travel around through town periodically, or, I mean, are you available, or, I'm available all the time, so. I mean, you, anytime.
Yep.
If I get my number.
Appreciate it.
She's been around for the business cards, they give it to you, so you have your house, your property registration, she is.
Yeah. Just for the. Yeah.
Yeah.
On Eric.
Sure.
On carbon of mine to liaise between you and Travis.
Okay. Yeah, I usually am usually done more.
All right, so.
We're gonna swing by on the weekend.
Thank you. Moving, uh, moving ahead on the agenda, we'll be sensitive with time.
Appreciate it.
I can give you my, do you have my card too?
We have to roll ahead on the agenda, so we're gonna keep discussing. At least that one.
Let me, let me get a, I'll give you a number.
I can put it right in my phone.
Oh, sure.
Yep, we would encourage you to do it over there, so we can continue.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
A pleasure.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, finally a person.
Yeah, same here.
All right, so next on the agenda is the introduction to Leanne Moses.
Hi.
Hello.
Uh, she is the new administrative services coordinator for the town. Um, we restructured the land use clerk position, it doesn't exist anymore.
Nine seven eight. One two seven five.
So we now have the administrative services coordinator along with our full-time planner,
Stop, and I'm not there, but you can call, so.
which I think is gonna give us the right personnel on the ground in order to.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, I'd myself do, so, yeah.
Same.
Yeah, no, we can be ready for the next meeting.
Gentlemen?
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, all right. Uh, so with that said, uh, Leanne, you wanna say a couple words, introduce yourself?
Hi, um, I'm brand new to town and brand new to this role, I'm learning a lot between the land use department and the assessing department, but I am excited to be here.
Thank you, and Nate, do you have anything you wanna say on this?
Um, no, to go further into that, the administrative services coordinator, clerk?
Yes, coordinator.
Coordinator is going to be the, a part-time employee in the offices of land use and assessing, and eventually the assistant town clerk. Leanne is very qualified to do it, has hit the ground running, is fitting right in, I'm looking forward to working with her, and I think she's gonna do a marvelous job. Please give her the opportunity to train and kind of learn the groundwork, so that she will have the opportunity to be, to be the best that she can be in this new position, that she will pretty much get to craft herself. So, I welcome her to our team, and I look forward to working with her and all of you in the future.
Awesome, thank you. And just a note for the board and for the public, her email address is asc@, um, have we, have we switched to gov?
Hubbardston MA.gov.
We, yes, we are gov now.
Hubbardston MA.gov, okay.
I fancy, we're gov now.
And then Nate is plan@Hubbardston MA.gov.
Alec is.
Alec is then.
Alec, Alec. This is what happens when we start late. Uh, so, moving further along the agenda, oh, welcome, by the way, officially, to the behalf of the board.
Thank you.
So, moving along the list, we have the community one-stop grant, which was approved, and we have Nate here to say a couple words about it.
I would like to thank you guys for your support earlier this year in applying for the community one-stop grant for the sand pits. We did receive a rural development fund, uh, grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. I'm currently working with Ann Goby's office, the director of rural affairs, and Alec, our planner, to configure what exactly this means. I would like to thank Patricia from her time as the land use clerk for working with me, I know we did submit about six of these. I wish we would have been able to hit a few more out of the park, but even getting one in a rural community is great. The timeframe for this is going to be decently tight, because it is a newly structured kind of part of the grant programming, so it's kind of Frankenstein's other grants and funding together, so we have until the end of the fiscal. But I look forward to doing this, I will keep you the most updated, and I'm hoping to really involve the public to ensure that we are one hundred percent transparent and completely honest about what is going on, I feel like that will be our best way to a future that is both successful and development-friendly. So I look forward to speaking with the residents of the town and the residents of that area on what they could see, if anything, in that large acreage of sand pits. So let's remember it's not just the Bonoff Pitcherville, there are a couple of adjoining ones, and we'll see how that goes. I will keep you in the loop, I will be working with Alec to figure this all out in the next few weeks. If there are any questions, I have minimal answers at this time, but I will field them.
All right, thank you. And there was some information that was, uh, provided to the board ahead of time by Alec, um, specifically noting, um, what he, uh, expects the process to look like from just a rough framework. Um, and will post those, uh, publicly after the meeting. But, uh, but yeah, it's a work in progress, um, because it's, it's a relatively nondescript grant, and we really have a lot of freedom to do the best work we can with it, so. Uh, with that said, any questions from the board on any of that?
Yep. Good job.
Awesome, so moving next down the list is the Country Hen A and R, uh, and the update on that is we've done some research, we need to do a bunch more research. Um, and we're one of the first people who are looking at, uh, what this new law has done to the merger doctrine. And, um, we don't yet have a good handle on everything going on, so Alec's still doing more research, and we'll report back in more detail later.
Can I just make a brief comment that, well, it was like Leanne's, what, second day? And we had someone coming in asking the almost identical questions, um, that the Country Hen had asked for a different property here in town, um, and we got her in touch with Alec, but I, I think this is gonna be one that, it's gonna be a domino effect, we, we're gonna get the one, and then it's gonna snowball from there. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that you should be seeing quite a few more come your way in the next coming months, so we'll keep you updated.
Yeah, I would certainly expect it. Uh, any other questions from the board or comments? So, moving along the list, we have the adoption of the site plan review and special permit forms. Now, we had talked about these in detail at the last meeting, but wanted to hold them again for this meeting before doing a motion and a vote on them, uh, to give everybody an opportu- opportunity to look further into them if they wanted to, um, and propose any changes or edits. Um, given that we went pretty far into these previously, um, I don't think we need. Given that we went pretty far into these previously, um, I don't think we need to go through that same depth now. So I guess I would start with, does anybody on the board have any questions about them? And these are administrative forums, for the benefit of the public, these are the administrative forums that, uh, that folks fill out for the purpose of doing a special permit or getting a site plan review, which are really a bundled process in our bylaws, but that's how we approach it on the forums. So I'll just hold for a moment so everybody can roll through them again and refresh their recollection.
Administrative administrative forums, that's, that's, for sure.
While you're reading that, Mr. Chair, can I kind of build on this a little bit?
Sure.
So this comes at a very appropriate time as we are just beginning a project to work on basically e-permitting for everything across the board. This will help with workflows and beginning the conversation on what will eventually aid in what will hopefully be no more turnover. But should there ever be turnover ever again, we will have assistance in being able to train said person that will never exist on what to do. So I look forward to that and I look forward to expanding upon this if approved. So Alec has been a wonderful help just in the short time he's been with us and this is something that was on your radar, my radar, and Chris's radar for some time now, so I'm excited to get this done.
If I may ask, oh, a question, of the e-processing, is that something that you envisioned, uh, for the twenty twenty-five or much further in the future?
Are you asking as a member of the planning board or as a member of the capital improvement planning committee?
Both, 'cause I, I wear both hats?
I don't know.
Well, that's why I'm asking, so, I mean, if there's, there's certain advantages for us to have this, maybe the e-planning?
Do you have a good idea?
We're, we're, we're working on it, let's just say that I received approval from the select board on Monday night to move forward with a change from open bill to civic plus for permitting
Okay.
and that agreement came with a certain level of commitment. And that level of commitment aligns well with a grant that opens up in January. But there is still a active capital improvement request on the record
Yep.
to be considered by the capital improvement planning committee. And I also have a twenty thousand dollar article on the special town meeting on the nineteenth to clean it up. I'm hoping that one of those will come to fruition and we will move forward from there. The ROI on this should be quite large over years and obviously not over a short period of time,
Yep.
but this will create opportunity for staff to spend more time. The end goal here is something that I've been working title called Hub Connect, it's got an apple with a little electric, yeah, it's, it's cute. And, but after that, we're going to be looking into things like kiosks, legislative management, board and committee management, all just running through workflows, uh, see click fix type fixes and issues, workflow reporting, and we're gonna be able to utilize that data to find bottlenecks and see where we should be putting more resources towards and where we can pull resources from. I'm hoping to be able to utilize that in the next three years as a huge KPI indicator.
Okay, uh, that, that's fantastic. Again, this is really, I mean, I do have the capital improvement, uh, hat on also.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, and as part of the planning board, and so I, I look at it, anything we can do to, uh, make things electronic?
Yep.
And more importantly, also be able to safe store it electronically, have great advantages for a town like ours.
So what's cool about this program too is once set up, this is gonna be very heavy on me and the Collin Center and Patricia and Leanne upfront.
Yep.
But what we're hoping, actually Patricia was there, someone called me a visionary.
Oh, I was like, please do not compliment him, his ego does not need it.
But we're, we're hoping that they can take this, if it works, and kind of promote it to other rural communities by packaging these,
Okay.
'cause, 'cause the town would never be able to afford these different out-of-the-box plug-and-play modules. But by creating it through power automate and kind of pulling the pieces together ourselves, we'll be able to get, do more with less.
Okay. So, would you wanna have this motion?
Yeah, would somebody like to make a motion specifically to adopt the forums as presented for use on special permit and site plan review applications?
So moved.
Hearing of first, do we have a second?
I will second.
Any additional discussion? Calling a vote?
Shit, I agree.
Dak, aye.
And the chair is aye. Uh, the forums are accepted. So moving down the agenda, we have administrative matters, uh, now, um, there's really two topics that are blended here and this is the culmination of probably, I don't know, six, seven months' worth of work uh, to put this together in a way that's consistent and actionable. So we have, um, we have the goals document that was previously sent out to the entire planning board and has been discussed at meetings and it's the unprioritized goals document, uh, which lists essentially everything that we've mentioned as a goal at a planning board meeting for the last two years, uh, plus some stuff that Nate threw in, that we asked him to throw in. And, um, and what we did for the benefit of the public was we took that and created a matrix and, uh, our town planner Alec sent that out to everybody on the planning board individually for them to score the matrix. So, um, the, the full score sheets without names tied to them just listed as participant one, two, three, four, and five have been distributed to the board. I don't, is it possible to throw that up on the screen just briefly?
They're in your binders too.
Oh, oh yeah, I suppose they are on the binders, I was just, I guess we don't have anybody else in the room, so it doesn't matter, throw it up on the screen. So, uh, I guess just to comment briefly, uh, with considering that we're five different people with five different minds, we're actually fairly in line on how a lot of this stuff went, there's really only a couple, a couple outliers. But, uh, but yeah, so. Just give everybody on the board a moment to kind of look at the big, you know, the big picture there with all the scores.
We have participant number four not understanding how to do this here, right?
Uh, I believe Alec had done some work with participant number four in order to clarify some of those responses.
Gotcha.
But yeah, it was set up to be, um.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, I think, total of the thirteen, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it was supposed to be, um.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the numbers got skewed as a result of this here.
Uh, because of the weight of the numbers?
Yeah.
No, it wouldn't have, uh, and Alec's comment on that is it wouldn't have moved any number further than two positions. And in our discussions tonight, we're probably going to, uh, consider moving some things around, but that in general, we probably shouldn't do further than two positions anyways. So that, yeah, it, it's suboptimal, but it, it, um, it's not totally invalid. It, it doesn't invalidate the process. So, uh, with that said, the next document is kind of the summary. And this is, is ultimately what we need to talk about. Obviously with, uh, and, and vote is not the right way to describe the form because we're a public body, it was assigning weighting to criteria. Um, it was not a, a formal vote of the board. But what I would like to, to discuss and would like to have the board do vote to approve is this document that essentially aggregates them with the averages and I'm gonna talk about why and what I think we should do with it. So, this isn't going to be a hard and fast, uh, well, this is project one, this is project two, this is project three, because we can't really, that doesn't actually work that way, like, we're not gonna be able to work on these sequentially. We're gonna work on what we can, what we can work on it, and by we, I mostly mean Alec. Because this is key to outlining what his goals and priorities are in his role with the town. So what, what he's going to do based upon whatever we agree on is he's gonna take this list and he's essentially gonna break it into groups of tiers. So there'll be like tier one, tier two, tier three, and that will ultimately be the priority, so everything in tier one is gonna make it right into the workflow right away. Everything in tier two will probably make it into the workflow, what's in tier three will be as we get to it. So it's not gonna be, oh, well, um, revising the commercial district, well, that's, that's the top of the list, so we can't work on anything else until we get that because that's not as a practical way how any of this works, because there's so many stakeholders that are involved in this. It's more about us allocating or helping Alec allocate the time he spends looking at stuff. I would also like to note for the record that we have had, uh, those resident groups that had thoughts for the battery energy storage bylaw and for the rural opportunity overlay, reach out and start working with Alec. So, um, those aren't specifically listed on this list, but, um, uh, I would encourage those to get eventually built in as like a tier two item. So with that as a background for the board and the public, um, what's, uh, what's everybody's thoughts on how this ended up?
Mr. Chair, I've also had a conversation with two of the people that participated in the, uh, agritourism derailment about beginning to work on that as well.
Excellent, thank you. So yeah, so I guess to, to start off the comments on it, I don't, I'm not super surprised how any of this kind of fell into the, the ranking because it, it kind of ranked between big picture things that I think we all think are important and then things that are kind of urgent problems. For the most part, I think what floated up to the top is, what I think is gonna be interesting to note about this is we are in a unique position right now from any other planning board that's, um, that's really come before us in terms of what we have available to us. And if, if anything, one of the most, one of the fairest, um, criticisms that I think somebody can make of the current iterism, uh, iteration of the planning board is like, wow, you guys have been really slow kind of getting started, putting some of this stuff together. And my response to that would be as well, because ultimately what we've been working on for the last year is making sure we have the right personnel on the field to actually be able to do all this stuff in a way that makes sense. And I feel pretty confidently that we've gotten there and that we have the right team, we have the right grants supporting us, we have the right planner, we, we have the right way of looking at things. So, I don't look at this list as something where, oh, well, we're just gonna get the top three done. I think there's a pretty good chance we're gonna get all of this stuff done in twenty twenty-five and we'll probably get a good chunk of it done before the town meeting. Because that's, that's how big of a difference it makes to have Alec on the ground with us. He has access to forums and resources and stuff like that that we never did. And trying to get that stuff through the, the regional planning organization takes time. Like, you can't just call them up and be like, hey, can you give me your best model bylaw for this? 'Cause they'll be like, oh, well, why don't you apply for the DLTA grant and then we'll get twenty thousand dollars of grant money to step you through that, um, that model bylaw. Um, we can completely cut through the red tape and, and get going on some stuff. The other observation that I have is there is some big things that rose to the top here and although, um, we've had this on a lot of agendas and we've given tons of opportunity for the, uh, the public to come in and comment, no one has yet, but that top list, the number one item of things uh, on that list is revising the commercial district and it's something that, um, based upon the voting, was pretty popular with everybody. But that's, uh, that's kind of a big moment for us to put that on the top of the list and put that on the top of the active work pile. So that's, that's kind of my thoughts on it. I don't know if anybody else has anything else they wanna share.
I, I would agree, like, items number two and three there, the zoning bylaw re-interpretation of the Vice Commercial District, almost kind of also go hand in hand, a lot of, a lot of overlap there. You could even take item number four there, which is the aligning the zoning bylaw with economic development goals, kind of also links into that area, so. The fact that we have the special permit and site pla- plan process already underway means that there's, there's movement and I think that's a, that's a step in the proper direction and really clearly indicates how Alex already has influenced this here, so good work.
Eric, any thoughts you wanna put on the record for it?
Yep.
Alright, so.
Mr. Chair, you know what we're gonna do?
Yep.
I would like to reiterate on what you just brought up, if Alec is great, we, we have a phenomenal team from the foundation up. Chris's involvement, your, your involvement, the two ladies right there, our team is going to be able to do a lot with the skill set Alec has and the skill set that we have here on the ground. I think it is a good team momentum moving forward and I look forward to it. And just, nothing really is going to be successful on the back of any one individual. So I, while I look forward to working with Alec, I think he's really bright and had a ball going around the sand pit in a side-by-side with him a couple of weeks back. I look forward to working with our entire team and the entirety of Team Hubbardston even more. And I'm happy and proud to have Alec on that team and have been one of the people that found him and brought him in. So I look forward to all of that.
Uh, thank you for that, and I, I echo what Nate's saying is that, yeah, Alec is certainly a big part of it because he, he cuts through a lot of how hard it is to do things these days. Uh, especially since we're working in opposition to the state and, uh, some of the stuff that they've put in in a lot of places, so. He's particularly important, but it is an all-around team that's been, that we've all been working pretty hard to put together for the last six or eight months. I mean, plus this year my seat's up, so, like, we gotta show some stuff.
Compare the time of vertex to right now and it's night and day.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Alright, so, uh, with that said, I would like to entertain a motion to accept the, um, uh, let me get the name of the sheet correct.
Hubbardston.
Yeah, the, uh, the Hubbardston Planning Board Goals Survey Summary, um, as our list of goals for further work, um, as, yeah, as our list of goals as a planning board, to be delivered to Alec, the town planner, as the list of priorities for the planning board and for him to work up into a work plan for us.
So moved.
Hearing of first, do we have a second?
I will second.
Hearing of first and a, a second, any further discussion? Awesome, calling a vote?
Shit, I agree.
Dak, aye.
And the chair is aye. Well, thank you, uh, thank you for your votes on it and thank you to everybody on the board for responding to this even if they weren't able to be here tonight. This is, this is the biggest of big deals since I've been on the board and, um, it, it really is, this combined with just having Alec, this is really kind of a big moment and, uh, I mean, it's all, it, it's all, we've been working on it for so long, I think it's kind of gotten lost in the noise. So, uh, I'm sure we're gonna start hearing a lot about it real soon, uh, once, um, once this all ends up on the website, so.
Yep.
We should all look forward to that.
We'll start having meetings.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would you like this posted on the website tomorrow? You said post on the website, I freaked out about that, so.
Yeah, we.
Would you like that?
Not, not a blast, but.
Not a blast, like, up in the, uh, news and announcements corner, per se?
It, it can be.
Yeah, send, send me the draft text on that, it'll be something like Hubbardston Planning Boards announces, um, goals and project priorities for
How do you do so?
Twenty, whatever the time period is we call it. And, yeah, and that will, that's gonna start some conversations, certainly. 'Cause we, uh, we certainly did not hesitate turning into the big stuff. Alright, so any matters not reasonably anticipated by chair, none that I know. All right, so any matters not reasonably anticipated by chair? None that I know were anticipated. Any additional matters to be brought up by members of the board or public comment?
Um, yes.
Yep.
I'd like to, even though the planning board knows about it, I know sometimes things get lost in the shuffle. I ask for your support on what will be article number five at the special town meeting. It is the E codification of the generals, general bylaws, zoning bylaws, and town charter and a legal review. It was something that we felt was so important that we're trying to get it done this year instead of waiting and running it through in FY twenty-six because it is that valuable. So, I ask for your support and let your friends and family know.
Okay.
All right. Oh, and just as a reminder to the board, there's also the volunteer appreciation night on, um...
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Please RSVP to me, so I know that you're coming.
Quick question. Uh, Leanne, will you be in charge also of our website?
Mm-mm.
Who is that?
Leanne will be in charge of your website when it is new and fancy.
When it's what?
New and fancy.
Part of what we were talking about is a new premium website on roll. So, once trained, which we began doing in part today.
Yeah.
We, yes, Leanne will be in charge of her department's websites. But for right now, I don't really want to train people on a relic of twelve years ago when we're going to be implementing a new system in the next two, three years.
That being said, if there are things that you would like to see changed, remember, Steiger, I would be happy to sit down with you and get them changed.
No, it was just sort of a general question. I know that there's a few stale things, like the news and announcement section, which always has been, and, um...
Yeah, I, yeah, I could unpublish everything and it would just be blank if that's what you would prefer, and then we put new stuff up there, but it, it literally, if you, like, I unpublished the best bylaw, the ag, 'cause that's where we had them for a while. I unpublished those, but then it just bumps up whatever was underneath it.
Wholeheartedly agree. I just think that it would be good, like, especially now that we have things like this that are coming up.
And that's where it would go, and that's where it would go, and then it would be in the cabinet that if ever we had to go back and republish it or whatever, like, whatever it need be, it's there. But like I said, with a new site going out.
I think with this information, we'll have a very good set of items back then.
Yep. I'll just create a draft verbiage and send it off, and you guys can say yea, nay, add this, subtract this, I'd be happy to add that.
Yep, and as we move towards the creation of that new website, which I'm thinking will be three or four months out at this point, maybe a little bit closer to the summer, the planning board will have a shareholder or stakeholder conversation about what they want to see up there, 'cause this new version of Civic Plus that we're going to be using, especially in partnership with the Civic optimized platform that does the permitting and the workflow management, is going to be significantly stronger and give us much more opportunity to do, I'm gonna just kind of nerd out and say, cool things. So, we'll be able to really revitalize the website for every board and department in the future because they did stack up, they did get stagnant, and we all wear so many hats that it gets difficult at times just to prioritize the minutia.
Can I just say something really cool about the Civic Plus, though, that I found out? So, in the case of e-permitting and stuff like that, especially with building permits, if someone is doing anything on a scenic road, like even putting in a driveway permit, it's gonna trigger, say, nope, you need to go to the planning board. Before, we'd have to pray and hope that someone would catch it along the lines with paper permits, especially with driveway permits and things like that. Things were not caught, and then things were done, and then it was like, whoa, wait a minute, we have this bylaw here, what's happening? Now, with Civic Plus and with the e-permitting, it's gonna be able to catch these things a lot sooner, and we won't be doing, you guys won't be doing things reactionary instead of proactively.
Workflow automation is a top-level priority of this.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, that was a nerdy thing, but that was one of our biggest problems in the past of, like, tonight.
Excellent. So, any, anything else from the board? All right, well, with that, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
I will second.
Non-debatable, calling a vote.
Steiger, aye.
Dak, aye.
Chair is aye. We are adjourned at eight forty-five PM.